Right, good evening. I'll call to order the June 9th regular meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Welcome, thank you for joining us. Before I ask the clerk to take attendance, I'd just like to take a moment, since this is our first time together since the tragic killing of George Floyd, to acknowledge his death. He was laid to rest today in Houston. And acknowledge the events of the past two weeks that have just rippled across our region and our cities and created devastation. While George's death was precipitated by, or the events of recent days were precipitated by George's death, it gets important to acknowledge that it's rooted in 400 years of structural, historical, and institutional racism and oppression. And to acknowledge the role of institutions in that racism and in the work ahead. I would acknowledge that we are one of those systems. In recent days and weeks, we have heard from countless students, alumni, teachers, and members of our community. We recognize that we have work to do. We certainly don't think that we have the answers, but are ready and willing as a governing body to lean into that work and move our community forward. With that, we'll move into the regular business of our meeting, and I will ask the clerk to take attendance.
Bach?
Present.
Danielson?
Present.
DeMay?
Present.
Glashine?
Present.
Sager?
Present.
Westerman?
Present.
Cher Weinhegen?
Present. We'll move to item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second it.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to take the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glashine?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman? Aye. Cher Weinhegen?
Aye. We'll move to item 2.1, open forum. Sarah, do we have any open forum comments?
There are no open forum comments this evening.
Thank you. Bring aside item 2.2 announcements. Shawna will read the gifts.
All right. Gifts were received from the following individuals. Cynthia Garrettson for the Nutrition Service Angel Fund District-wide. Wells Fargo Matching Gifts Program for Student Support at Sunnyside Elementary School. Joel Kruger at Domino's Pizza for a pizza donation for Nutrition Services District-wide. Becky Hapala for Student Support at Sunnyside Elementary. The following were donations for the Ralph Reader Food Shelf. We had a donation from Doris and Roger Burgland. Betty and Eugene Bright. Eugene and Kay Christensen. Sue Edmondson and David Lepatza. Beth and Mike Donahue. Susan Ebers. John and Rosemary Hunt. The Foothills Foundation Kara Johnson. Gregory Johnson. Neil and Teresa Kopeck. Munson Charitable Fund Paul and Karen Munson. Marilyn Nelson. Presbyterian Church of the Way Amy Davies and Pastor Parker. Pursuit Community Church Barb Sutterholm. Alicia and David Smith. Vicky Sodal. St. Odilia Catholic Church Jim Schwumberger. St. Vincent de Paul Society Kevin Griffin. Sunrise Methodist, Sunrise United Methodist Church. Steven and Noreen Thompson. Thrivant Financial Your Cause. United Church of Christ New Brighton Pastor Amy and Joe Broberg. The total donations for this period were $31,125.98. It is recommended that the board accept the gifts and extend its thanks to the donors.
Thank you Shawna, and thanks to all the generosity in our community. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting dates, June 23rd, 7:00 PM, a regular meeting of the board in this online format. I will note that that is the last meeting of our school board year, and we will take the month of July in recess. We've got item 2.3, superintendent's report. Superintendent Lennox?
Great. Thank you Jonathan. You know, I want to begin by seconding the comments you made at the opening of the meeting. Traditionally, this would be a meeting where we would discuss graduations, end of the year celebrations, summer programming, but this year's been anything but traditional. Pandemic, distance learning, the killing of George Floyd, and so many unknowns about the future. I have to say, in more than 30 years in education, I've never experienced a year like this, and truly hope we never will again. But that said, many people are already starting to reach out. They're sharing thoughts, comments, ideas about the fall, asking what might be different, asking about what will be expected for the reopening of our schools. And what I can tell you, right now, there are so many unknowns. As we shared in our letter with the community, our strong desire is to get back to what we believe we do best, which is teaching and learning with our students in person. We really desperately want our students back. But understanding that some decisions will be out of our control over the summer, we will continue to plan for various scenarios. But we commit to communicating with our families and the community as soon as we have additional information to share over the course of the summer. You should know that the Minnesota Department of Education has now identified the week of July 27th as a target date to share detailed guidance with school districts about their expectations for students returning in the fall. Now, some of you likely will have questions before that time, and when you do, we'd ask that you'd send them to info@moundsviewschools.org, where we'll collect those and be able to answer them. So then, when you're looking for additional information, we will post those, and you can visit our frequently asked questions page for updates throughout the summer. We'll keep that as up-to-date and accurate as we possibly can. And then, a second item tonight, I did want to take a moment and highlight the announcement that went out earlier today regarding Sheila Eller. Sheila's our current principal at Highview Middle School, and she'll be leaving us at the end of this school year, the end of June. She's accepted an elementary principal position in Brainerd, Minnesota. Sheila let us know that this was just a unique opportunity, and it's going to provide her with new challenges and allow her to work in the beautiful Minnesota Lakes country. Sheila will definitely be missed, and we want to wish her all the best in her new position. As we move forward here in Moundsview, I want the public to know, we will immediately begin the process of identifying a new principal. We'll be considering both the strengths, as well as the needs at Highview, and are committed to finding an individual who'll be able to continue to move the school and community forward. So, we will be in touch with more information about those next steps in the coming days. And with that, I will end my report.
Thanks Chris. That'll take us to item 3.0, approval of the consent agenda. I'd understand a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glashine?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman? Aye. Cher Weinhegen?
Aye. Motion carries. That'll move us to item 4.1, construction update. Superintendent Lennox and representatives from Kraus, Anderson, and Wold will give us a little preview of what's been happening while the buildings have been vacated by students during distance learning.
Well, thank you Jonathan, and I'm going to turn it over to the team. This is just so unusual to be doing a construction update virtually, as we have not been able to gather, but very excited about the process, where we are in the process of construction. And if there's anything that maybe could be good about the pandemic, it's the opportunity for our construction to continue to move forward and perhaps even accelerate a little bit. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to our construction team for presentation.
Good evening. I'm Paul Aplikowski with Wold Architects.
Gary Ziffko with Kraus Anderson.
And I also have Tyler earlier from Wold. He's been helping out on district-wide projects. Go ahead Gary.
All right. We're just going to do a quick run-through of all the projects under construction. I think, as we, we'll just, Brian, if you can go to the next slide. Now, this is, so this is kind of where we are June 9th. You know, the Phase 1 projects are complete, except for Edgewood. Edgewood was one of the first, in that first group. Phase 2 projects are under construction, Bel Air, Irondale, and Moundsview. And then, all the Phase 3 projects are also well underway. Next slide. Paul, do you want to take the first, the renderings?
Sure. So, in each of these, what we've done, I'm sorry Tyler, can you meet your microphone. In each one of these, we've done some of the renderings from the projects, and then we have construction photos. So, the top one is a rendering of the inside of the cafeteria. That's how it should look when it's all done.
And then, what we have below is the new addition of the cafeteria, looking from the, from the street. Next slide. To the left, we have an aerial view of Bel Air. You can see on the bottom of that picture, the new parking lot and the new bus drop. And then, as well, on the backside, the new classroom addition with the new paving tying into the playground. On the right side, those pictures are showing the work ongoing inside, the kitchen area, cafeteria, in anticipation for turning that over. But, so yeah, we're wrapping up Bel Air, and that will be ready for start of school this fall.
And then, again, at Chippewa, there are two renderings here. So, the top one is the view just after you walk in the main entrance from the secure, the new secure vestibule, and you'll see the reception desk there. And then, the next one down is back a little farther in what used to be part of the office will now be part of a student commons.
So, these slides are what we're seeing out there today. On the top-left corner, that's the, looking at the new additions of the front entrance. The bottom-left is the interior of the, of the main entrance to the school. And the new walls going in for the offices in the addition. And then, on the top-right, you can see some of the new panel work, metal panel work going on, the exterior of the building. And then, just a shot on the bottom-right is of the new entrance addition on the front. And again, Chippewa will be wrapped up and complete and ready for school to start this fall.
And then, these are a couple of shots of the new classroom area at Pinewood. So, on the left, we're looking, and both of them, we're looking at kind of the flex area and looking into the classrooms, the adjacent classrooms. And as a reminder, those classrooms have a pretty significant door that you can open up and flow out into the flex area.
And this slide on the, on the left is another aerial shot. On the top-right corner of this, of the building picture, that's where the new addition is going. And we're actively working on the new parking, bus drop site layout. The addition is up, and we're actually have drywall installed and getting ready to, in the bottom-right corner, that's just the parking lot work being done. Pinewood is again, going to be complete and ready for school to start this fall.
And at Sunnyside, the top view is a view of the new cafeteria expansion. So, we're opening up the existing outside wall and putting in those beautiful windows for some daylight. And then, the bottom rendering is of the classroom addition. So, there's a five-classroom addition on the west side of the building.
The photo on the top-left is the new classroom addition at Sunnyside. Photo on the bottom-left is a view from inside of the renovated cafeteria space. Those plywood windows will be beautiful windows when we're all complete. And the photo on the right is just some corridor work that we're doing. Sunnyside will be complete with the cafeteria and kitchen work for start of school. And then, the classroom addition work will be complete around this Thanksgiving, similar to kind of how Turtle finished up last school year, so.
And at Valentine, the top view is of the cafeteria expansion and remodeling of that space. And then, the bottom picture is the lower level of the two-story classroom addition on the south side of the building. And that is the flex, the common space outside those classrooms there.
On the left, you can see all the site work and the additions going on, on the south side of the building. On the far-left of that photo, there's also the addition of the cafeteria. Top-right, just the structural steel for the classroom addition. The middle picture on the right is the addition of the cafeteria. And then, the photo at the bottom-right is a photo from inside the cafeteria. Valentine, Valentine's a lot similar to the Bel Air project. The cafeteria work will be done for start of school year. The additions, the classroom additions on the back will be done the beginning of 2021. Valentine will be the last building that we're, that we're in as we complete that at the beginning of 2021.
And at Moundsview High School, you're seeing on the top a rendering of the new weight and fitness area, which is built into the old auxiliary gym in the back. And then, that bottom view is inside the new four-station fieldhouse at Moundsview.
On the top-left photo, that's a, that's a photo from up on the elevated track, looking down onto the new gymnasiums. On the bottom-left is inside one of the new classrooms. Top-right is from the floor of the new gym space. We're starting to put the wood gym floor down now. And bottom-right is interior renovations back where the new fitness area will be. Moundsview High School is one of those projects where we're tracking actually ahead of schedule. I think in the original referendum plan, we hadn't, we planned on being done in the late fall of this coming school year. We will be done by the start of school. So, that's some good news for Moundsview High School.
And here's some rendering from the Edgewood project. So, on the left is the rendering of the new activities entrance on the north side of the building that feeds into the new pool, the new gym on the left, and then back into the main building on the right. And then, that rendering on the right side is inside that lobby. That's the new lobby that connects those activity spaces.
The photo on the left is an aerial shot. You can see on the, on the bottom-right of that photo, that's the new parking lot that we finished up last summer. At the very south of the building is the classroom addition. Kind of midway, midway through the center of the building, on the left side is the science addition. And then, on the top is the pool addition and the gymnasium addition. On the top-right photo, that's the new parking on the north side. Starting paving, paving this week on that. The gymnasium is done and ready to be handed over. And the bottom-right is a photo of the new pool. That's currently, they're working on all the deck tiling as we speak. Edgewood's another project that we did some maneuvering early on in the project. The building administration allowed us to get into some renovated locker room spaces earlier than we had anticipated at the beginning of the referendum. So, Edgewood was one of the projects that we thought as well, we were going to be into the late fall of this school year, but we will be complete and out of there by the start of school this year.
Could I ask a question on that, the aerial drawing there?
Yep.
Did you say the top-right, that is the new pool?
Yeah. Oh, the very top is the new gym, and then just below that square on the right is the new pool.
Okay, okay. And then, the area down on the bottom of that picture, that's a new, what's that, is that the new?
Yeah, if you can see like the white, the white, kind of the white border, the white roof flashing, that's, that's the new classroom, two-story classroom addition. And to the left of that is the old pool that we're currently filling in, filling in, and that will be used. I think that's left up to the district what they're going to, what the final use will be.
Sure.
Okay, okay. I guess I was turned around entirely on how this was oriented. So, that's why I was confused. Thank you.
Yep, yep, no problem.
And then, at Irondale, on the top, you're seeing one of the hub areas is what we've called them. These are the intersections of the four main hallways. So, this is an example of that being opened up and creating some flex space in that building. And then, on the bottom, for those of you that are driven by the building, you start to see this take shape. But that's a view from the exterior, and that is shot from about, the angle is from about the entry to the stadium there by the annex building.
All right. On the top-left photo, that's a photo inside of the new auditorium. Kind of standing up, standing up on the stage, looking out into the chairs. On the bottom-left is, that's the new commons area at the new entrance. Top-right is the existing auditorium. You can see all the chairs have been removed from there. That space will be infilled to make it a level floor that will be used as a multi-functioning space for the school. And the bottom-right is one of the photos that, the renderings that Paul had talked about, the, one of the hubs in the, in the center of the building. Irondale, all the new entrance, the hubs, the administrative offices will all be complete and ready for the start of the school year. I think if you guys remember, we had that temporary main entrance on the, on the west side where we put the new classroom additions. Those will be repurposed back into their original intent, new classrooms. And then, the front entrance will, will move back to the south and be the new front entrance. The only, the remaining items are the auditorium, and that will, the finishes will be taking place into the fall, the start of the school year, anticipating handing that over to the school around Thanksgiving. So, next steps, just to kind of summarize the photos that we went through. So, complete Moundsview High School for the start of school. Complete the Edgewood Middle School for the start of school. Complete the Chippewa Middle School for the start of school. Complete Bel Air for the start of school. Complete Pinewood for the start of school. Complete Irondale High School and the new auditorium by November 2020. At Elementary will be by December 2020. And then, our last one, Valentine, will be February 2021. So, we are, we are coming to the end. We are on time, a little bit ahead of schedule on some, and under budget, so.
Music to our ears.
Um, could I ask a question about that, the timeline? And maybe, Chris, this is for you. Looks like we're going to be, most of these will be complete and open and ready for the start of school. You're assuming we'll be back in full swing at that point, of course. How much time are we allowing our staff and our faculty to come back in and kind of get resettled? They had to move out in many of these buildings. So, I'm just wondering how that's built into the timeline?
We will obviously work with our administrators in trying to move them back into those spaces. So, as construction goes, and we have access to spaces, we'll, we'll work with our principals on allowing them back in. Some of these spaces are brand-new, so nobody's been in there. I know there's been ongoing conversation about who gets the new spaces, and how do we share common spaces, and all of that is ongoing. But obviously, we'll, we'll stay really closely aligned with KA and Wold as we have entry dates, and we're allowed to take possession and start moving in there, working with our principals on that.
I would also add that the vast majority of all the new and renovated space is getting new furniture. So, certainly, teachers will want to come and bring their materials and settle in, but most of the furniture is being timed with the end of construction. So, that will be in place for them when they arrive.
I have a question about the auditorium at Irondale. Do, is, does that new space include space behind the stage? Is there like green room space and different things like that for students before they go on to the stage?
Yes, there's a full scene shop with full access to the stage. There's storage for all of the pieces, that equipment that accompanies the auditorium, like an acoustic shell and those things. There is a new dressing room and green room, and then, there's a connection. We're closing off the area back by where the band room, where the band room is, the band room door, and the connection, music suite. So, that will also be part of the backstage area. You can be back there and be separated from the audience that would be out in the lobby area.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions for our partners at Wold or Kraus Anderson?
I didn't hear nothing about the Irondale weight room. Is that something that'll be up for fall, or is that more on the November timeline?
That will be, that will be ready for fall. There, we are, we have it infilled, and we're finishing out the spaces.
Great.
I'm not, I'm not sure on the equipment. I know that the school is purchasing the weight equipment, weight room equipment, so we'll have the space ready. I'm sure they'll have some equipment trickling in through the fall, but.
That's another example of Kraus and the contractors were able to get in there a little early because of the distance learning going on. So, that's another, if you want to look for a silver lining, there's a silver lining there.
Great. Well, thanks to all of you for presenting it, for the work that you're, you're doing in our buildings and across the system. Can't wait to get students back into the new spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Yeah, thanks.
You too.
We will move to item 4.2, proposed placement on unrequested leave of certified staff. And it looks like Amy Jo Johnson and Carl Brown will present.
Thank you, Board, for having us this evening. Before I propose the staff that are going to be placed on unrequested leave, Carl Brown is going to kind of present to you a little bit of how we came to this decision to lay off the number of staff that we're looking to propose this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Amy Jo. Say, I wanted to provide a little bit of a history on this and some background of this proposal. As you know, the district is, has a great history of providing high-quality, early learning programs for years throughout our community. And we're absolutely committed to early childhood education in the district. Since March, COVID-19 has created some challenges that no one planned on, and has directly impacted some of our early childhood programs and timelines in ways that we never would have seen, foreseen. In a typical year, we put out registration information because early childhood is a combination of fee-based programs. There's state aid that's based on enrollment, and then, there's also some levy dollars that we have to provide programs. And so, in those combinations, we put out a registration guide for families. They can register. It helps us understand what enrollment look like, looks like, and know what types of revenue we bring in, in those timelines. So, that's kind of our Plan A. And we do have a schedule built, and we have staff placed, and we, we know what we'd like to do in the fall if we're back in person, because that's also something we know. Having young children in person is the best option we have available. And then, COVID came along and created some uncertainty. Since that time, we've seen some decreasing enrollment. Prior to COVID, we are seeing pretty steady enrollment with different families and filling our rosters and programs. Once COVID hit, I think, in early childhood, as well as any of our other fee-based programs, we saw a lot of, I guess, what I attribute to wait and see. When, when people didn't know what was happening in the fall or even summer, people were putting registration on hold. People also utilize our preschool programs, not directly, but as a form of childcare. And it's something that we know that that's a traditional model, is that if you commit to that, you have a number of days that your children are in classes, and we would, would have that. With the uncertainty in the model, like Chris had mentioned, of either an in-person model, a hybrid model, or a distance learning model, people are cautious in what that looks like. And so, putting all that together, it's something that we know that we've definitely have some uncertainties in place. And while we did have our Plan A, our traditional schedule in place, we're anticipating, based on what the Department of Education will identify as what types of programs we can offer in the fall, that we may need to make our changes, make some changes in our staffing and our program models that we had to commit to. With that, we have a May 30th timeline within our teacher contract, and we wanted to make sure we honored any of the contractual obligations associated with that notification. So, that's a little bit of a background information of where we have been.
So, with, with the uncertainty of the funding, and with some contractual deadlines and state statute of July 1 of notifying staff that they're going to be placed on unrequested leave.
So with, with the uncertainty of the funding and with some contractual deadlines and state statute of July, July 1 of notifying staff that they're going to be placed on, on requested leave. We've had to notify a number of certified staff or are proposing a number of certified staff in early childhood to be placed on, on requested leave. The staff that we're proposing in the attachment A have the statutory right to a hearing if such a hearing is requested within 14 days after the post-action is taken. And before I make the recommendation, does the school board have any questions regarding the proposed placement?
Not a question, more of just a comment, just to underscore that this does not signal a change in our commitment to the CFE program generally as a district.
Yeah, and we're committed to as soon as we get better guidance from the M D E to start recalling these staff back to their positions based on seniority and the programming that we have available to them. With that being said, it is recommended to the board that the certified staff listed in attachment A be proposed for placement on, on request leave of absence pursuant to the attached resolution.
I think it's been moved and seconded. Can I just confirm?
Yes.
Excellent. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen?
Aye. Motion carries. We'll bring it to item 4.3, non-affiliated compensation for 2020, 2021, and Amy Jo Johnson and Bridget Peterson will present.
Well, thank you very much. We're bringing you to the board this evening. A group of non-affiliated employees or non, non-unionized group of employee unique situation where we propose to the school board increases for this group of employees. They don't negotiate their salary benefits. So we're proposing for the 2021 year, school year, an increase of 1.75% for this group of employees. For salary increase and an increase to their 403B match of $500. The total cost for the year increase is $280,000. And I do also want to mention that the proposed that we're presenting to you this evening is in line with parameters that the school board set for us last spring for settlement for our union contracts. And so our proposal that we're presenting is within those parameters that you set in the spring. The school board have any questions? No. Okay. So it is recommended that the board approve the salary increase for non-affiliated employees for the 2021 school year as proposed. So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to item 4.4, quarterly budget reports and amendments. And we will keep Bridget in the hot seat.
Quarterly budgets. I know that's normal, but tonight, good evening, I'm here to report our 2020, 21 budgets for five of our funds. The first being the nutrition service fund, the community service fund, the second, construction fund, debt service funds, and our capital outlay and long-term facility maintenance. These budgets were developed from work at many previous board work sessions and meetings. Therefore, tonight I will highlight for you the changes from the 1920 school year and report total revenue and expenditures to you. I'll begin by, starting with the nutrition service on, on page 13 in your materials. The changes from the 1920 school year that we're proposing to increase lunch prices by 15 cents and no other changes to revenues at this time. Our total revenue budget is approximately 6.3 million, which reflects this lunch price increase, while total expenditures are 6.9 million. The second fund I want to talk to you this evening about is our community service fund. And those major changes from the 1920 school year include a reduction in revenues and expenditures related to COVID for some unknown summer programming that our district typically runs in the summer months. Because of COVID, unfortunately, we're not able to run those programs as we have in the past. Therefore, we have reduced revenues and expenditures for that reduction in programming. The total revenue budget in the community ed fund is approximately 6.4 million, while the expenditure budget is approximately 6 million. The next fund is the construction fund, and that is on page 18. The changes from the 19 to 20 school year are mainly just, we're entering phase three of our construction. And many of our projects are wrapping up, therefore our cash is lower, therefore interest earnings are lower. So I have a proposed revenue of 1.5 million for interest earnings and an expenditure budget of 48 million, leaving approximately 37 million in fund balance in that fund. Next fund is on page 20, and that is our regular debt service fund. A major change from the 1920 school year in that fund is that in the 1920 school year, we had a refunding bond. And our proposed budget for 2021 does not have a refunding bond as we have no eligible debt. Therefore, in the 2021 school year, we will just have our traditional property tax levies for revenue and the principal and interest payments in our expenditure line items. Revenue is projected to be about 16 million, while expenditures are about 16.5 million. Our OPUB debt service fund has nothing, I have nothing major to report from the 1920 school year. It is just the traditional levies as well as the principal and interest payments in that fund with total revenues projected at 2.1 million and expenditures at 2.2. And the last, it's not necessarily a fund, rather a couple of program areas in our general fund. And so I have the capital and long-term facility budgets attached and for your review. And while these revenues and expenditures, expenditures, as I stated, are not in a separate fund. They are a restricted component of the general fund and carry a large revenue number. So I wanted to present them to you because in the past they have fluctuated significantly. However, we are projecting no major fluctuations in the future for these. We're projecting roughly 9.6 million of revenues and 9.4 million of expenditures in those two areas. Are there any questions on any of the fund that I presented for you this evening?
Great. Any questions of the board?
No, thank you, Amy.
Yeah, thank you, Bridget. I will just note, Sarah, for the record, the board packet reflects quarterly budget reports and amendments. And it was actually the 2020, 2021 community service, capital outlay, debt service, and nutrition services budget. So if we could just make that adjustment to the packet. We will move to item 4.5, approval of transportation contracts, and Carol will be presenting on that.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. So we began our transportation procurement process back in January with the goal of securing a new transportation service agreement, which would be commencing in the 2021 school year. With the, also the idea of sustaining quality services and containing our annual expenditures for transportation costs. During that time period, we received written quotations from 24 service providers. And so with the help of the transportation department and our consultant with Watson Consulting Group, we spent a significant amount of time going through the information that was presented in each of the written quotations that were received. At your May 12th board meeting, the board approved four agreements with type three service providers. And so we kind of broke this down into two chunks. And so tonight we are bringing to you the final recommendation for two additional service agreements. And so it is recommended that we retain the services of transportation services with American Student Transportation and Metropolitan Transportation Network as full-service providers for the school district. By providing two service agreements, the, the services will provide the district with the capacity and flexibility for the district to meet changing levels of transportation needs. And in addition to adopting service pricing agreements, it will provide cost controls for the duration of the contract period with which the contracts represent. And so in your packet, you have the complete contract language that was, that was agreed to by the two service providers that are being recommended for approval tonight. So I welcome any questions that you may have at this time. Hearing then, none. It is recommended that the board approve tonight the student transportation service agreements with American Student Transportation for two contract years. I said only American, but with also MTN, Metropolitan Network Transportation for two contract years commencing with August 1 of 2020 and ending July 31st, 2022. And with an option to extend for additional two one-year contract periods.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Bach?
Aye.
Danielson?
Aye.
DeMay?
Aye.
Glassheen?
Aye.
Sager?
Aye.
Westerman, aye. Chair Weinhegen?
Aye. Motion carries. I'm sure I'm one of many parents who hopes that, that transportation is necessary as we head into the next school year. That will take us to item 5.1, updates. We'll start with AMSD.
Thank you, Jonathan. The AMSD met on May 22nd. We heard a presentation from the Minnesota Department of Education's Tom Melcher and Adash Unie on House File 4415. Basically, it went over some education budgets from the state and some policy. They also discussed House File 163 that did not get passed in the final minutes of the legislature. Also, Minister Department, Minnesota Department of Education's Finance Director Andre Proll reviewed the CARES Act for funding for schools and noted that expenses dating back to March 13th for the remainder of September of 2022 can be, funds can be used for that. We also heard from Executive Director Alex Liuzzi from the Professional Educator Licensing Standard Board, who provided an update on what the board is up to. And a note that Reimagine Minnesota is going to have a virtual conference on June 17th. From what we've learned from distance learning and how we ensure access and opportunity for every student. And the keynote speaker will be the Lieutenant Governor. On legislative front, as I mentioned, that House File 4415 passed. House File 163 was a policy bill. It didn't get through in the last moments of the legislature, would have likely passed, I suspect. But it may be brought up in a special session. The legislature adjourned on May 18th. And the governor has indicated he may call a special session on June 12th, and he may not. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Mary Jo, 916 and Ramsey County League.
Okay, just a couple of highlights from 916. We got a report from Elon Noor about the, the e-distance learning in 916. A couple highlights. The support that also was remote staff and students noticed no, no difficulties in the support that was provided. And even though there was a 76% increase in support tickets this year over last year. Another fun fact was there's 400% increase in 170 sessions in training. That 170 took place in the first month of distance learning. So the, everyone was eager to get in there and learn how to do things to make their experience better. We did find some staff and a lot of students that had no access to internet or technology devices. And so we worked through that and got some Chromebooks. The other thing that was found, some students actually did better because there were fewer distractions than there might be in a, in a classroom with other special education students. So that was a really interesting report. At the Ramsey County Legal Local Governments this Friday, as Jim said, there may or may not be a special session. So we did not try to schedule an event, which would be the normal Friday to have that. We were planning to have legislators come. So it is just going to be a regular board meeting, which I will attend. That's it.
Thanks, Mary Jo. That'll take us to item 6.1, school board member reports.
Nothing. I, I guess I'd just like to comment on the, the graduation ceremonies that were held, the virtual graduation ceremonies that were held. Although clearly not what, what anyone wanted, I, I just think they were done very well. I tuned in live and watched, watched the Mounds View High School graduation. I thought it was just done, done very well. And just commend the staff that pulled that together to make it, you know, as special as it could be for those, those kids and those families. So I just wanted to, to make a shout out for that and also to congratulate our graduates.
Other board member thoughts?
This is Jim DeMay. I'd like to echo a few things that Jonathan said earlier. You know, in our community, we remain grieved with our students, our neighbors, our teachers who've, you know, as we remember George Floyd, who and others who've passed away unjustly. This has been an incredible school year. As a new member, I think now I have three meetings online and three meetings in person. I would have never dreamt that in a million years. It's been a year unlike any other in the history of Mounds View High School. And graduation night, I had my son George graduate. You know, the folks who put that together did a fine job. It was a bittersweet night, you know, watching the kids not being able to walk across the stage and hug each other. And we thought all the events that the kids missed all year, the sports, the proms, the concerts, the field trips. But it also made me realize how fortunate we have been in the past to enjoy such things. Looking at this construction, it is surreal to walk or drive by any of our schools and not see a single student when these areas were always bustling with youth and energy. Nobody ever thought March 11th would be the last day of instruction in our schools. And to the graduates, as we leave the 2020 school year behind, remember, I'll give you an inspiration quote. Do your little bit of good where you are. It is those little bits of good put together that will overwhelm the world. Archbishop Desmond Tutu. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Jonathan, can I just take one second to acknowledge the death of our school board colleague from St. Paul Public Schools? Marnie Zhang died this week from the coronavirus. She's the chair of the St. Paul Public School. Just letting her family know that we are thinking of them.
Absolutely heartbreaking. Thank you for, for that reminder. Yeah, I think I'll just, you know, wrap us up. I'll, I'll share my congratulations to our graduates. You know, certainly not the, the year end that any of us wished for them. But I think it, it adds to their character and we are rooting for them and looking forward to seeing what their future looks like. They are prepared for anything. I would also just like to, you know, I'd say congratulate and thank our parents, many of whom were newly minted teachers for the last several months of school. We couldn't have done this without them and really appreciate the work that they did in partnership with us. Certainly our teachers, you know, we, we thanked them along the way, but the work they did to migrate education and an experience online, and then I think even, you know, more important, the connection they continue to make with students. Whether it was through online chats or email, or even in some instances showing up with a note on a driveway. You know, just a remarkable group of individuals and the rest of our staff. So everything that, that has been accomplished through what has been a really, as Jim said, kind of bizarre end to a year has been done with, you know, so much precision. And that would not And that would not be possible without the incredible talent of, of the team that drives the work that we do. And then lastly, just the administration, Chris and your team. We, we closed out another successful school year. I'm proud of the work that, that you and your team have led along the way. Look forward to our, our continued partnership. I know we'll have an opportunity to reflect further on that in our last board meeting of this session. But seems appropriate to acknowledge that as we, we wrap up the, the formal school year. So wishing all of our, our families a, I'm going to call it a, a great second summer because it kind of feels to some of us like we've had our first summer to some extent. And we really look forward to welcoming our students and our families back into our newly constructed and expanded facilities and educating them in a, in a safe way as we head into the fall. With that, I'll ask if there's anything else to come before the board. We are adjourned.